... pray a plea. Lord, thank you for another beautiful day you've given us today, Lord. Lord, we ask that you lead us, guide us, and direct us. This board goes by conducting the business of the great people of Gulf County. Lord, we ask again that you touch the hearts of the families that's lost loved ones. From our last meeting to the day, we've lost six fine people out of this county. People there, families that they go about through the healing process. Lord, also, we'd like to keep in mind that we've lost the fine county commissioners in Glades County, Mr. Dennis Griffin. They have certainly left a lot of free and small children. Lord, we ask that you bless our military, bless our law enforcement that looks over us in Texas, bless all our good people in this great state farm, and bless the United States of America. We ask this all in your precious name, baby. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the February 11th Annual Meeting of the Gulf County Board of County Commissioners. If any of you, if anyone has any business before the board, you, we will give you the time and we'll look forward to you coming up. This time, if we will, first, I'll ask, is anyone from the public, before I call for motion, to accept the consent agenda? Does anyone in the public have any questions over the consent agenda? Come forward, Ms. Ratcliffe, please.
Barbara Ratcliffe, 210 South Palm Street. I do have a question regarding page ninety.
Page ninety.
It's Mr. Price's request for payment of, I guess, to the, to the fire departments for the Santa Runs, which I'm not opposed to the event, I'm just questioning the policy of why it wasn't approved in advance and how much is it? There's no supporting documentation and which fire departments participated in it and exactly where the funds are coming from and how much they are.
All right, before we accept the agenda, Mr. Price.
The only ones that participate is Highland View, White City, and the beaches. And the funds come out of their budget every year.
All right.
And it's an unknown amount, really, we, it's not, never been over, say, three hundred bucks, but it goes back out to the community, these fruit and candy. They have a Santa Claus riding truck.
Right, I understand the event, I just was surprised that there was no supporting documentation as to how much money and if it's an every-year event, I would think he would line item some amount.
Highland View, White City, beaches. Yeah, that's right.
It's never been an issue until now, because that's what y'all like to do. We'll, we'll put a line on them on it and then we'll set an amount.
Or even maybe a not to exceed.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, not to exceed.
I think you've answered her question here. All right. Thank you, Mr. Price. Thank you, Ms.
So, the total, the total for thing is, is three hundred dollars, period, for all three?
No, 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 no. Dress us, we'll set that. We'll set that.
But, I mean, this particular one.
All right.
That he's asking for payment, how much is it now?
And we said a not to exceed.
We'll get that in just a minute. I'm not sure I could run through all the bills that were paid. Do you know right off, if you're seeing this, there's about six pages?
Probably is for last year, but not this year. It's always been, we just, after they did it, we pay it. And since I've been here for two years. And this is, and this is, what, the second or third year I've done it, so. And we just did it, whatever, because we never know what exact amount is, but if you want to cap it, that's fine with us, I mean, we don't care.
We'll get that when we get into county bills.
As far as her, her problem here, I don't.
All right.
I do not know.
Mr. Chairman, is this for last December or next December?
This is for this.
This is last Christmas, yeah.
Okay.
Twenty thirteen Christmas. Let's get our numbers right. Twenty thirteen Christmas, okay.
Mr. Chairman, and then from there forward, you know, the, the budget committee, all these are, I think it would just be something you put on.
Okay.
That's not a problem.
That's right, Ratcliffe, it'll be taken care of.
But, the bottom line is, nobody right now can tell me how much this is.
There's three of them.
Wait a minute.
And it's probably two or three hundred dollars a piece, top, out of, out of three different departments.
Three different departments.
Tops.
Mr. Price, could you have us, per number, before the end of the meeting?
Uh, probably, yes.
Would you get that?
Yes, yeah, let's go get that. All right, if you would. Needing help, step over to clerk's office, they'll help you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, anyone else concerned with the consent agenda?
Page ninety-one, I'm on abstaining from ninety-one. Mr. Chair, uh, I think most of that goes to his own firm, but it's actually billed through Purpleish. I'm on abstaining from page ninety-one, but we'll be all at the same consent.
All right, one abstention, oh, ninety-one.
Mr. Chairman, I have on page four, if I can direct the commission's attention to it.
Wait a minute. Page four?
Please.
All right.
Under the policy administration oversight and direction, the minutes, and I spoke with the clerk's office, reflect a, an abstention by Commissioner McLemore. In review of that, we're going to clarify that, but I think that that abstention goes below under the CDBG project, so if we can, we'd like the permission to amend the minutes, to remove it from the policy and put it where it's appropriately placed underneath the CDBG award. That's the commissioner's abstention on page four.
All right. In dress, sir. Push him in. Second. All right. Push him.
Yeah, so move for the consent agenda with those changes.
All right, on the change, on amendment. Second.
Attorney.
No, it correctly notes your abstention from those original meetings, it was just, just not you, it was the other commissioner.
Got a motion. Just second.
Can I second that, Mr. Attorney? We need to.
For the amendment to correct the minutes, it's, it's, it can be a unanimous vote of the board for correction of the minutes, it's not with regards to the action that was taken. Second.
All right, got a motion, second. Any further discussion on this? Anyone from the public? All right, we're going to have this on page four. Any opposition? Motion passed. Five and O. All right, I took care of page four. Address ninety-one, is that correct?
Well, I, I just abstained from page ninety-one.
Okay, all right.
Motion, and I'll feel like necessary.
Okay, now then, we have a motion to accept the agenda. Motion over from Commissioner McLemore to accept, I hear, second. Have a second, is any discussion? No discussion, any comment from the public? Not, motion passed, four, one abstention. All right, okay. Where's Ms. Lanier? Oh, you moved on me, there you go, okay. All right, Ms. Lanier?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I only have one item this morning.
Okay.
Um, the board approved, um, at the end of last year to purchase software for this new computer that's here. It's compatible with what the clerk has, however, the clerk has requested that we actually draw up a contract for that amount. The board has approved the purchase, but I need to get the chairman to sign. Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, repeat that again.
Okay, um, the board has previously approved software for the clerk's desk here. It's a permanent fixture and it allows us to be able to tape more than just the board meetings.
Okay.
Uh, for instance, our PDRB and such, by having a fixed computer here.
Sure.
Um, what we did not do, even though the board approved the purchase, uh, the clerk's requesting that we do a contract, so I need the chairman to sign the actual contract because it has a maintenance clause, and, um, if I could just get the board to approve the contract.
I'm a, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner McLemore, do I have a second on this?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Smiley, any discussion? Anything from the public on this? All right, composition? Pass five and O.
So, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Herring?
Nothing.
Uh, Jenkins?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners.
Good morning.
How are you?
Fine, dear.
I had a, my TDC Advisory Council meeting last Thursday, um, and the committee has accepted the RFPs for beach cleaning and requests your permission to award, um, the beach cleaning this season to Coastal Parasail. They're out of Bay County, they've been our vendor for a few years, um, with a cost of weekly cleaning throughout season not to exceed twenty-six thousand dollars.
How much again?
Twenty-six thousand dollars.
Twenty-six thousand dollars.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for the discussion, just, just one question, uh.
Okay, just a minute. Motion by Commissioner Jaeger, second by Commissioner Bryan. Now, we open for this.
Yeah, just, is that the same company, Ms. Jenkins, that's been doing it for us?
It's the same company, we've increased, we've budgeted to increase the cleaning of the beaches weekly, if necessary, and so that's why it's a not to exceed amount, unless there's hurricanes and storm damage that we need to go beyond that. Um, and it's St. Joe Beach in Indian Pass and Windmark, when we can get on Windmark, not the Cape, we can't clean from stump hole up to the state park.
We haven't had any issues with them?
They're getting better and we'll have, we'll have the beach ambassadors out there and, um, more monitoring, so they're getting there. They understand that, through our process that we implemented last year.
And Ms. Jenkins, there's limited, limited contractors that provide this service, is that correct?
We had two, right. We had, did, motion, did we get a motion?
Do you need, uh?
No.
Do you have anything else?
Yeah, I have a few.
Okay, we'll take care of this. All right, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jaeger, second by Commissioner Bryan, any further discussion on it? Any public comment? Not, motion passed, five and O.
Thank you. Um, in front of you, I put a memorandum about the upcoming beach ambassador program. We discussed this during the council meeting and you can see that, um, I've detailed some estimated costs. This is the program, and we'll have beach ambassadors, um, throughout the season on the beach, working in conjunction with the Sheriff's Department as well as the South, South Gulf County Volunteer Fire Department. The idea is that we'll, um, be on the beach greeting visitors, um, discussing our, our ordinances, uh, if they see people with pets that aren't on leashes, they'll go up and talk to them, welcoming them to Gulf County, um, letting them know that pets should be on leashes, and if they don't have one, they'll hand them a leash. We'll be talking about, um, you know, information on the turtle nest and the dunes and beach driving and, um, as well as talking about a modified leave no trace, just communications. You know, thank you for being here, I see you have lots of tents and chairs. At the end of the day, you know, please put them under your tent and, in an organized fashion, and certainly do not leave them on the beach when you go home. So, it's just, it's a pilot program, there are some costs involved on startup, as you can see. Um, there's some vehicles that we will need, we'll need a, a four-wheel drive out on the Cape and Indian Pass, uh, for the Sheriff's Department and code enforcement, if they're out there. That'll be housed at Station One. Um, I spoke with Chief Aco about this, as well as a vehicle for the other beach ambassadors that will be going, either they'll, it will be housed at the welcome center, they'll either start their day by doing a pass at St. Joe Beach or end their day at doing a pass at St. Joe Beach. And just some other branding and some promotional materials. Then, I spoke with Mr. Butler about this, this will be funded out of the one cent, which is, um, is allocated for beach nourishment, and I'll be working with Mr. Novak on writing up the whole policies and procedures and the expenditures, um, for the vehicles as well as the program.
Mr. Chair, this is a pilot program, too. We've, we've had a lot of discussion with CCA and others, and it affects mine and Commissioner Bryan's district. Uh, with the leave no trace, I think this is a good start to say, hey, can we handle this without necessarily enacting a full-fledged ordinance?
Right.
But, get it going with this.
Right, and the, and the communication will also, from the ambassadors, will funnel through the Sheriff's Department, so that we'll be notating, um, interaction with guests, warnings that are issued, and then at the end of the season, we'll have some data to either further the program or modify it.
And it's a positive approach to enforcing the rules.
Right, right. And it's supplemented by those beach signs, which, um, the, um, the Public Works and Maintenance Team will be putting on the beaches out on the Cape and St. Joe Beach and Indian Pass. So, I just want to show you in case there's any que, is there any, I'd like to, should I get a motion to move forward on this, Chairman?
So moved.
So here.
Thank you.
Motion by Commissioner Bryan, second by Mr. Jaeger. Discussion? Anything from the public? What? Opposition? Motion passed, five and O.
Two more quick things, uh, Mr. Chairman, the, the cruise ship committee met last week, um, Loretta Costin is leading that, and we're working with, um, the city and, and the PSJRA, and we'll be, um, working towards, uh, defining that whole program and percentage to City Council hopefully next week. And finally, in your information packet, I put, um, the January monthly report for the TDC, and I'd just like to note that, uh, bed tax dollars for the month of December were up forty-eight percent over last year, so the first quarter of the two thousand thirteen fiscal year, um, we're ahead by five point three eight percent.
How many five point?
Five point three eight, October, November, December, December was up forty-eight percent.
Good deal.
Good job, John.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Whitfield?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Danford, anything?
I have enough, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Daniel? Richardson?
Just for public information, uh, PDRB for seventeen's been canceled, and also, uh, on the bigot waters NF, uh, NFIP insurance issue, uh, looks like the Senate has passed a delay for, uh, four years, but the House is in debate over, uh, the issues, and I think it's tied not so much for the insurance reform as it's procedural, as there's some, uh, legislation's tacked on to the bill that they don't, they don't like, but, uh, it's still a very hot issue, but it does look like there's going to be a delay coming through for at least two years, and also, uh, they're going to force FEMA to do an economic impact analysis, uh, that they hadn't done before, so it's still evolving, but there seems to be some relief coming. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I think without the legislation, I think FEMA is, the last thing I've read is FEMA has implemented themselves an eighteen to twenty-four month, uh, delay, so that's a good thing, even if the, even if the House doesn't pass it, it's going through.
That it, Mr. Richardson. Ms. Kapinski?
Um, yes, sir, I, I do have a few things, um, this morning. First of all, a couple of meetings ago, you approved a grant agreement, um, with Division of Emergency Management on Tropical Storm Debbie. It's an HMGP project for a new area of the stump hole back towards the Eglin property, and we signed that agreement and they contacted me, the amount of the agreement was a hundred and five thousand nine ninety-three, and due to time, um, being a factor, they asked me if we could just modify the budget and replace the budget pages and not have to re-execute the, the entire agreement, and so I told them I would just follow up and get you to ratify it today. The new amount is one ninety-eight seven fifty.
Wait, went from one oh five to one ninety-eight?
Yes, sir.
The grant award?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Seven hundred and fifty dollars, that's great. Mr. Attorney, any, you have any questions on this?
I don't, and I, and I'll review that before, if you put the conditional approval through, I'll review it with Ms. Kapinski before she sends it back.
Out of one ninety-eight, that's great.
I need to abstain on that?
No, this is, this is just a grant agreement.
Yeah, that's all this is.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
All right, we got a, a motion by Commissioner Jaeger, you're second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smiley, any discussion? Any discussion? Anything from the public on this? Opposition? What? That's five and O. All right. Red, Ms. Kapinski.
The next thing I have is a proposal from Purpleish for our grant, for our scrap grant with DOT for Ward Street in the amount of nine thousand nine hundred dollars. I need the board to approve that proposal, please.
You say Ward Street you're talking, and St. Joe Beach, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just make sure we're on top of everything.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we have, motion by Commissioner McLemore, second by Commissioner Bryan.
I'll abstain, Mr. Chair.
And Commissioner Jaeger, stains, have anything from the public on this? What? Motion passed, four, the one abstention.
Um, the next thing I have is a proposal from Purpleish for the Sals Creek Boat Ramp Grant in the amount of fourteen thousand eight thirty-five. This is a grant that, um, was in your last packet, I believe, we, we just received it. We applied for it a couple of years ago and, and just got it, and we got the notice to proceed on it, so, um, that's the proposal to do all that work on that boat ramp grant.
The Sals Creek.
Yes, sir.
How much are we spending on that, Ms. Twon?
Um, the grant is one forty-eight, three fifty, and then we, um, will be matching it with ten thousand of our, um, regular VIP money.
So moved.
All right, have a motion by Commissioner McLemore. Here, second. I hear second. All right, we have a second by Commissioner Smiley.
I'll abstain from that one, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, another abstention here, uh, is any discussion on this boat ramp? Anything from the public? Not, motion passed, four, the one abstention.
The last thing I have, um, we received, I received an email, um, regarding the voting improvement grant applications. We actually have two going right now, Lands Landing and Sals Creek, but they are taking, um, uh, applications again, and, um, Mr. Butler and I talked yesterday, and we received NRTA funding for Indian Pass and Highland View boat ramps, and, um, there's been talk over the years, um, on both these grants, of, of doing some partnerships and, and maybe relocating the Indian Pass boat ramp and enlarging the Highland View boat ramp, and what I would ask is that the board give us permission to look into, um, look into these two projects and potentially apply for FBIP for them and use the NRTA as match money because it will get us more points. Um, it will obviously be contingent upon obtaining the site control documents for the relocation of the boat ramps and the extension of them, otherwise, um, you know, if we can't get the site control documents, then we can't apply for them. But, I, I guess I'm just asking for some legway in, in looking into these, and then if any of the commissioners, if you have any ideas about how these two boat ramps could be redesigned or, or constructed, if you could get with me this week, then we can look at some different proposals, because we're going to have to try to get some estimates together for the grant based on what we want these boat ramps to look like, but we're getting a hundred and seventy-something thousand from NRTA, and so that's a huge match, um, with these two grants. I don't know if Mr. Butler has anything to add.
Let me ask one clarification, please.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we're talking about just the, uh, Highland View and the Indian Pass, are the four, Lands Landing, uh, all four of them or just these two?
No, sir, just Highland View and Indian.
Okay, just clarification, just the two, okay. Sure. Uh, wait a minute, Mr. Butler, I think, were you through, Ms. Kapinski, on this?
Yes, sir, unless.
All right, Mr. Butler, we recognize you.
Well, those two, Highland View we're looking at, we were talking in the past years about enlarging the Highland View boat ramp to make a basin, and it would take a public, private partnership with the Rapids and Gulf County to make that work. Same thing that Indian Pass, a, an agreement between the owners of the, um, park and the, um, and Gulf County to relocate that boat ramp. What we need also is permission from the board to spend a limited amount of money to, to get an estimate up for each one of these, uh, relocations. It's going to take some design work, not, I'm not talking about designing these, because we don't know yet what it'll be, but if we can come up with some preliminary agreement on what these should look like, and then have at least some limited design work by engineers on what head wall was, you know, the sea wall would cost in Highland View if we did that Highland View, what, uh, it's going to cost to remove the boat ramp in, in Indian Pass and build a new boat ramp in Indian Pass, but if we get some, some okay from the board to, to spend some limited money on design work for the application, for the FIP application.
You know, Mr. Chair, what, the, the two, the two boat ramps, we've both got different issues. Uh, my issue is, is we have to go down there and, and clean the one out at, at Indian Pass sometimes, you know, once a week or, or more often, depending on the tides and those type of things, so, um, the, uh, McNeil family has been gracious enough to let us, uh, see if we could go back, uh, towards the lagoon where the old boat ramp was that they allowed the public to use years ago, and it's not there anymore, but to, to put that boat ramp back in, and I think Commissioner Bryan needs to expand hers, so these are something that now's a perfect time with the NRTA money, now's the perfect time to get them right, and so.
We, uh.
Yeah, I'll put it forward with a motion.
Yes, ma'am, but truly, again, this one in Highland View would be a great asset to us, because I know, I'm down here in, uh, the one here at the City Marina, I guess, it's packed out, and, and if we can get that one over there in that district, that would really, really help us take some pressure off of this one out there.
Safety issues currently at the Highland View.
I second his motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right, you want to put a motion on the floor there?
Yeah.
All right, Commissioner, uh, Jaeger, place a motion, Commissioner McLemore, second. Any further discussion on this? Anything from the public? Not, opposition? Motion passed, five and O.
I, I would like, I would like that, no, go ahead, but I'd, I'd like to ask Mr. Attorney a couple of questions.
Sure.
On the, uh, Wheels Landing and the, uh, excuse me, Depot Creek Boat Landing, have we made any headway with that? With, you know, I know we were working with the St. Joe Company, now we have a, a new company that's involved with that, on, on getting more acreage there, have we made any headway on that at all?
There's a, there's a growing list, Commissioner, that we have, um, on a couple issues with, that still exists for St. Joe along the coast with some of our NRTA projects that we're working on, and then with regards to boat landings and those assignments, we're going to have to, are, we have existing language on the lease agreements that we had had, extended for twenty-five years, we could, if they did assign those, um, but on the ones that are still outstanding, we need to accomplish that with the new group, um, so that's something to be added to our list. We don't have it recorded right now.
Okay, would you mind contacting the new owner then? You know, we're, we're needing, well, I understand it, to, to go out for grant funds, we're needing about three acres for each site, and they have the acres there that we just need to get it from them.
Yes, sir.
Kapinski?
That's all I have.
You have? Thank you. Hammer? Nothing? Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the first item I have this morning, um, our Veteran Services Officer, Mr. Joe Paul, has, uh, come over and joined us, um, I know he has another commitment, but I wanted to hopefully address, uh, page twenty-one in your information packet this morning, if I can direct the commissioners to that. Um, there was a letter from Mr. Joe Paul to each of you commissioners, uh, requesting the consideration for the county to be considered a Purple Heart County. Um, there's correspondence in there from Mr. Joe Paul, um, and there's a proposed resolution that we've put together for your consideration, and I, if you wanted to, um, have an opportunity to come up and address you commissioners or answer any questions, if not, I'd like to read the resolution and have you consider it for adoption.
Please. Mr. Paul, do you want to, he here, I saw him recently.
He might have left already.
He might have.
Okay.
Attorney, read.
He indicated he may have to leave, but, um, his letter's in there, which is pretty explanatory, and the resolution is a resolution of Gulf County Board of Commissioners whereby recognizing the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women of the armed services, armed forces, to preserve their memory in Gulf County and to honor those veterans that have received the distinguished Purple Heart Medal. This board of commissioner hereby, commissioners hereby proclaims Gulf County as a Purple Heart County. Um, it reads, whereas the people of Gulf County have great admiration and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served their country and its community in the armed services, and whereas the veterans have paid the high price of freedom by leaving their families and communities and placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all, and whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women of Gulf County who served in the armed forces have, like, have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens, and whereas the many men and women in uniform have given their lives while serving in the armed forces, whereas the cemeteries in Gulf County hold the remains and the honor the veterans who have served the United States of American conflicts since the country was first conceived, I apologize, the county was first conceived, was first conceived, I apologize, the county was first conceived, and whereas various other counties within Florida, sixty-seven counties, have taken the measures to ensure that the memory of all veterans, both past and present, are preserved for all time and all generations. And whereas the County Commission of Gulf County wishes to recognize on behalf of their citizens the continuing contributions of our armed services in protecting our freedoms and American way of life, and whereas Gulf County wishes to permanently honor and memorialize all American veterans and their many sacrifices for our country, and whereas Gulf County Commission wishes to acknowledge the families and their sacrifices of the armed service men and women who guarantee our freedoms and liberties, and whereas many citizens of our community have earned the Purple Heart Medal as a result of being wounded while engaged in combat with an enemy force construed as a singularly meritorious act of essential service, and now therefore be it resolved, the Gulf County Board of County Commissioners does hereby proclaim Gulf County as a purple county, Purple Heart County, so designated honoring the service and sacrifice of our nation's men and women in uniform wounded or killed by enemy while serving to protect the freedoms enjoyed by all Americans, and is proposed for your adoption today. I know Mr. Joe Paul had expressed in discussing when he sent the letter in and we started working on this resolution, that he'd like to come back and actually present a proclamation to this county commission at a follow-up meeting. And as indicated in his letter, he'd like to provide, present the county commissioners with a plaque commemorating this as a Purple Heart County to be hung in a place of high visibility and honor within the county commission halls. So if you can, Mr. Chairman, offer it for public comment before your consideration.
Any public comment on this? Gulf County, you know, we have a, a LaVanna winner. A lot of good people have their lives fight for our freedom and all, and this is, this is no expense to the, even if it was, but it's none, it's just something this county's gonna recognize for military people.
The move, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion by Commissioner McLemore. Second by Commissioner Bryan. Further discussion? Further from the public? In opposition? Motion passed five and oh.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The second item is to update you on the Habitat Conservation Multi-Species Plan. The vendors have all submitted their RFQs. The technical advisory committee that you appointed has received all of those RFQs. There's a follow-up date for them to all conference and submit their scoring. Ultimately, the goal is to present to you on the twenty-fifth, the recommendations with regards to that HCP plan, where you can engage a technical consultant, and we can begin moving forward on the county's HCP plan. So we hopefully will have something for you at your next meeting in terms of a consultant to recommend. For the public's notice in your commission, at your last meeting, you motioned to move forward the public hearing. I just wanted to remind the commissioners and the public that on the twenty-fifth, we will have noticed a public hearing for the Cinnamon Hill Association and the proposal for the abandonment of various right-of-ways and roads in St. Joe Beach Beacon Hill. And again, that will be noticed for the twenty-fifth of February, and I spoke with Mr. Studstill, and he's preparing for that presentation in the community as well. In your packet, the information packet, you'll see there's a bereavement request policy department form. I believe it's page, pages one through six of your information packet. This policy form that was provided to you is after discussion with the administration and the various department heads to try to advance the current personnel policy in creating forms that will help each of the department heads administer, and then obviously provide it to the administration for their personnel files. The form that's placed in there is a proposed form, simply indicates the county administrate, the county personnel, when they request, request time off under your current personnel policy. There's also conditional language in there with regards to the AFL-CIO union agreement you have with your public works. If the commission finds the policy form appropriate to adopt, we'd ask that you make a conditional. Our union contracts coming up this late spring will put place that form in there for their consideration and adoption. Right now, it would only be imposed on your county personnel outside of public works. In speaking with Ms. Manuel, too, she has extensive experience over the years with this. She had made a couple suggestions on the actual form. Right now, what we will include is some additional dates and, but ultimately, it'll be an employee signature on an affidavit, an approval by the department head, and then submitted to the county administration, be placed in their personnel file for funeral leave or bereavement.
It's just a tracking, paper trail.
Essentially, sir, yes.
Yes.
You need a motion on that?
If you would adopt that policy.
Sure.
With that condition, with regards to union contract.
Motion by Commissioner Jager.
Have a second to it.
Again.
Second by Commissioner Bryan. Further discussion on? Anything from the public? Opposition? Motion passed five and oh.
Attorney?
Commissioners, if I can direct your attention to pages fifty-three through sixty-two and your consent, I'll take you back to October twenty-second was when we had Jordan and Associates here. I'm bringing the issue up as a point of clarification. At that time, we had a CDBG contracts awarded to various contractors for projects for citizens throughout the community. We had the commissioners abstain in an abundance of caution, both Commissioner Smiley and Commissioner McLemore. Since that time, we've received a response indicating that Commissioner McLemore, in fact, the familial tie would not be a conflict of interest. Commissioner Smiley did abstain at that time, and it was a continuing abstention. We have change orders in today's packet of fifty-three through sixty-two, and I just wanted to note for both the minutes and the commission that as you move forward, the abstentions from October meeting were ongoing on those contracts. And if you recall, Jordan and Associates was at the podium requesting that you all acknowledge that those abstentions would go forward because they would may have change orders that come up in the future. And I bring that again to your attention for the purposes of pages fifty-three through sixty-two. Any questions from the commissioners in that regard? The next one I have is with regards to our animal control ordinance. Over the holidays, I had received a request from an individual who had received a citation. A gentleman lives on the Cape, his name's Mr. Henry McDonald. He requested the opportunity to make a contribution to the Humane Society in lieu of paying a citation, and then he also requested if he could pay double his citation. So he wanted to make that contribution. The ordinance is very clear. I certainly don't have the authority to make those decisions, but I wanted to bring it to your attention. He's actually provided me with confirmation that instead of two-hundred-and-five dollars, he's now paid four-hundred-and-ten dollars to the Humane Society in response to that citation. There's certain surcharges and administrative fees that the county runs through the ordinance. I'm gonna go back and review the ordinance in the next two weeks, but I wanted to bring it to your attention so that you're familiar with the issue, and if it is permissible, I'll come back in two weeks and ask for you to make that acknowledgement and really that acceptance. But as it stands right now, I don't have a, a recommendation for you one way. Another, I just wanna let you know, Mr. McDonald made that contribution to the Humane Society for his dogs that came off a leash.
Thank you.
Honestly, and I know him, he's made a lot of contributions.
He's your ass.
All right, Mr. Attorney.
Thank you. Update you all on the EMS transport. I've spoken with Mr. Whitfield. I've reached out to Sacred Heart and requested that workshop date that I told you all about. I've received responses from Mr. Hall's office and his staff indicating that, in fact, instead of a workshop, they are gonna be submitting a proposal in response to our latest for the county commission to receive, and their staff is putting together an agreement. We've gone back and forth about how we'd arrange that agreement, coming up with contracts for per runs versus contributions to the county, and its EMS transport obligations and the costs each year. As it stands right now, I hope to be able to provide you what Sacred Heart submits to us at our meeting on the twenty-fifth, and ideally, it'll be in written form so I can present it to you for all acceptance. At this time, Chairman, that's all I have.
Thank you. Attorney?
Just a question, if you don't mind. Mr. Attorney, I noticed in my box that you received yesterday something from Lifeguard, and have you seen this, Houston, about backup? You haven't? Okay. All right, well, I'll give this to you, and y'all can address that later then. Yeah, that's all, that's my only question.
Mr. Chairman, been working on, I'm sorry, solid waste RFPs. I think at this point in time, I've talked with both city managers, Don Minchu and Jim Anderson, and both cities sound to be willing, seem to be willing to go along with the county and to bid, to seek proposals from solid waste providers for the next term. And I think what we need at this point in time would be a formal request from the county commission or a formal okay from the county for me to, to, to get those two cities on board, and to also try to get some people off, both from both cities, to sit on the RFP committee to get this proposal, request for proposal the way we want it. So my question, my request to you is to, is to make a formal request to the cities to bid solid waste services at the same time we bid.
All right. Yeah, we will entertain one. All right, we got a motion from Smiley. Second?
Second, that's consolidation.
Okay. Did you officially second it?
Yes, sir.
You did? Okay, second by Commissioner McLemore. Question on this? Anything from the public on this? Right, is any opposition? Not? Butler, you can meet with the two municipalities. Motion passed five and oh.
Mr. Chairman, just put information on our side. I'd sit on the committee. Joe Dampert logically would be on the committee, Mark Carthian would be on the committee, and Denise would be on the committee, and anyone else that you guys may want to go on the committee. But then hopefully, both cities will put someone on the committee to, to figure it out. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sheriff? Come on. There you go.
You look sharp, Sheriff.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
First of all, while I've got the ear of the public, I want to let everybody know that our Gulf County Sheriff's Office website is up and running, the highly sought-after and I would say a little bit controversial mug shots are available for everyone to look at, but a lot of informative information on there, bring you up to date what the sheriff's office is doing. We've got a section on there for the wanted persons. We've got a section on there that give our weekly law enforcement summary, some information that the public will find very, very helpful. So that came up and running early yesterday morning, so check it out. Another issue that I wanted to bring forward to you and ask you for your help on, current facility that I'm housed in next door has got some issues. I have got several of my computers that are housed in a particular location there. We're out of compliance with FDLE standards concerning security there. Other issues that I constantly face with is just a lack of space for, for an office staff in there of eight people that are in, primarily in the office around the clock. And my evidence room, the evidence room, of course, is over on the far side of the jail. Last week, we had FDLE come in after breaching their evidence procedures over in Pensacola. They had to come in and examine forty-three articles out of our evidence room. In order to do that, we have to go get those items out of the evidence room and carry them through the jail in order to get them to our facility next door over there. It just creates a lot of problems with the way the, the facility is designed over there. Coming to you, asking for help and asking for alternative means or alternative site for the sheriff's office to be housed in. We're currently, that, that facility there, I believe, is inadequate for what we need to do for the public and to keep our employees safe over there. When you walk in the front door, it's wide open. I have no security for my ladies there at the front desk and almost a direct shot back there to my office as well. So I'm looking for some, some help from y'all and whatever way you can give it to me.
Question? Sheriff, haven't you been looking at, or y'all, or whatever, been, been talking about the, the old health department down here?
Yes, sir. I was approached several, several months ago, maybe close to a year ago, concerning that facility, realizing that only half of it's being utilized. A small portion of it is being housed by investigators at this time. Of course, Supervisor Elections Office is there, and then there's a large portion of it on the other side. It used to be the old health and rehab facility, and it's being heated and cooled, and nothing is, it's not being utilized for anything now, it's just vacant space.
Would that building serve your purpose?
Yes, sir, that would, that would serve my purpose there. It would allow us the opportunity to, to grow, expand, also get administration and investigations under one roof, be able to create a secure and sound facility for the evidence room.
What does the board think on this? I mean, are you?
Talking about moving Supervisor Elections, right?
Yeah, you'd have to move him.
I can't, I can't go along with bringing the Supervisor Elections, where you gonna put it? We can't put Supervisor Elections Office there. I don't think it'll work out great for lots of people. Lots of people don't like coming around the jailhouses. That's gonna run lots of people from coming. I'm just saying, I mean, people who don't break the law don't like to come around the jailhouse. So I don't, I really don't recommend that we put it next door to the jail. I mean.
I understand, Mr. Smiley, but bear in mind now, the current facility where the Supervisor Elections is, is attached to our Investigations Office.
But that's not a jailhouse.
Me and my gun and badge, so.
Right. I mean, it's perception that you, it's going out that people see, some people don't like to go around the jail, and I feel if we was to put the Supervisor Elections Office next to the jail, that's gonna stop lots of people from wanting to come out and vote.
Okay, and that facility is just used for early voting, correct? It's not the primary polling place. Primary polling place would be at the.
At your precinct.
At the precinct.
Yes, but I still feel it's a lot more stuff that people need to come out and take care of Supervisor Elections Office, information that they need. A lot of people will not, Sheriff, a lot of people don't come around the jail. It's just that simple. And just like, just like Mr. Jager just sat right there and said himself, Tan, I don't wanna go around the jail. So I'm just speaking from listening to a lot of people who heard this conversation months ago.
Yes, sir. I do understand your point there, but, but bear in mind that on any given day, if you were to approach the Supervisor Elections Office as to where it's at on Long Avenue right now, you would have more of a chance than encountering a law enforcement officer at that location than you would if you walked in our front facility right here. I mean, you have your entrance to the jail, but all of the business pretty much goes on in the back and out of Sallyport. So, but I understand your point.
Yeah, I'm just talking about the perception and, and from what I've spoken to a lot of, when it first was brought up, lots of people come up to me and say, Tan, that, that, that won't work. So I mean, I'm willing to step out and try to do whatever we can do, but I would like to keep the Supervisor Elections Office sitting there so voters who want to come out and vote don't feel threatened about coming out, don't feel no, nothing about coming out, like Mr. Jager just said.
Anyway, I think it's a waste if we, if we have that building down there, it's a waste not utilizing. Half of it.
We utilize it this year, because this is an election year. Next year's, you know, an odd year. His, his is twenty-four seven.
Yes.
Down there is not.
I mean, you know, I understand Mr. Smiley's point, but, you know, sometimes you have to do what you need to do, and if you need that building, you know, I, I have to give it to you if that's what you want.
I think it makes sense. I, it, it brings the Supervisor Elections back to the courthouse facility where the clerk is and the tax collector and all. It, it makes sense. I do think, you know, you probably do have some people that may be a little concerned with the election.
Bring this out here, and quite naturally, you know, listening to all the situations going on with voting suppression, some people might want it there so they can stop some people from voting. So I don't, that's, that's what I'm saying. I want everybody to have that right, if they want to come out and vote, they can come out and vote. So, I mean.
Well, I think what we've got to do is find, you know, we've got to find an option if we, if, at the end of the day, we're not going there, but I, I think it makes sense. He already has his investigation arm down there. There's part of that facility that's not being utilized. It makes perfect sense. I think we even put some dollars.
We're gonna put a new route.
Budget for that. And so I think it makes sense. It's been a discussion for a long time. It wouldn't hurt, I guess, you know, hold a public hearing on it or something.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
I do think it's a serious issue, and there's, there's a good argument on both sides of the issue clearly, and it is the use of the public's resources. I think it's an issue that should be on the agenda and that the public should have the opportunity to weigh in before we take action.
Okay, and, and another thing, too, Mr. Smiley. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
But another, another thing, too, actually, an individual has three ways to vote. They're an absentee, he can do early voting, or they can go to the polls. Really, truly, if they really have a real big problem about coming to the jail, they don't have to come to the jail and vote.
And bear in mind, the Supervisor Elections Office was at the courthouse up until just recently.
Yeah, we're looking. We will. Thank you. Anything else? That's all. All right, before we go to the board, okay, okay, well, gotta say the commissioner here. Before I go to the board, let me, let me first declare something, Bo. Yeah. Mr. Price, would you return, please?
I apologize for that.
No problem.
I probably should have put an amount in there, but I was waiting on the third one, and it didn't come because they paid it out of their pocket. Highland View paid it out of their pocket. The Beaches paid theirs out of their fundraiser, and the amount for.
Beaches?
For White City, who's gonna take it out of their account, is four sixty-seven.
How much?
Four sixty-seven.
So this all costs four hundred and sixty-seven dollars, and who, who donated?
Highland View pulled it out of their pocket, the volunteers.
So it costs, actually, it's nothing.
So it costs exactly, nothing?
The Beaches pulled it out of their own fundraiser budget.
Okay.
And, uh, White City's taking it out of their, their fire department budget. If y'all want to go ahead and do a, uh, uh, bu- a cap on it now.
We'll take care of that. We'll take care of that. All right, thank you, Mr. Price. Thank you. All right. Uh, I'm gonna recognize City Commissioner.
I just want to come up and just make a comment about moving the Elections Office. I think it would definitely hurt early voting. When I run for office, I politic all the way doing early voting. I'm out on the street corner. I don't wait to the day of elections. I'm out there flagging people down and, and it's a central location where everybody can get to pretty easily. But if you move it out here, it's not an essential location. And, and I just really believe it will hurt early voting. That's what it'll hurt most, is people that want to come and vote early. A lot of them have to find rides to come. Older people, they can't get rides and they can get a ride a lot easier uptown, I think, than they can out here. And that's just what I wanted to put in with my two cents worth.
Come see us anytime. Thank you, Bo, thank you. All right, now we're going, Commissioner Smiley?
Yes, uh, Mr. Clay. Can you come in on some of the projects that we discussed?
Clay Smallwood, Purpleish, uh, yes, sir, had our, on the CDBG water line project for the city. And that includes the, the sidewalk worker there. Had our pre-construction meeting last week. Contractors getting their utility locates called in this week and gonna break ground next week. And so I think it's a four-month contract, so, for the next four months, they'll be getting after it.
Hang in.
Thank you.
We go here.
Oh, okay. All right. Uh, I had some calls. I had a wreck on, uh, Cape Sandblast Road on thirty E. It's probably the second one that they've had. What we're gonna do is send a letter to DOT with the board asking for double lines. It's a state road. And so I think the sheriff, you know, was, there was several, uh, cars involved in that and probably double lines would help the situation out there through that general area from, um, probably five hundred feet before you get to Scallop Cove to four, five hundred feet after the trading post there. So we'll, we'll, we'll send a, a letter into that and hopefully we won't have any more accidents. So I think there's four ca- cars and some, some injuries there. Board doesn't mind, I'll do that. Just to let the board know, we had a meeting, uh, done, uh, with, with Ms. Hardman and, and the sheriff, uh, aim and, and many of the people in the community talking about the intersection there at C thirty and ninety-eight. They couldn't give us an answer right then, but told us they'd give us an answer within the week. And last Tuesday, Jason Peters with DOT called me back and said, look, um, well, if, if the board will do a resolution, we'll put it back in.
Good deal.
They, they understood. So I think we've got the resolution on pages nine through twelve in the information pack. If the board would consider that, I'd put that, uh, before the board for a motion to approve that resolution to ask DOT to put that back in.
Okay, good. Commotion by Commissioner Yager? We have a second by Commissioner Bryan for the discussion. Discussion from the public. Dr. Hardman, please come up.
Pat Hardman, uh, President of CCA, one-two-three Mayor of Elaine. I want to just say how much appreciate everybody's work on trying to get this done. I mean, we feel like we were beating our heads to death against big government. I do hope that the resolution, I hadn't had a chance to see the resolution, I apologize, does give them a, a limitation of time. I would hate for them to wait until the end of the project to put that egress back in. We are having close calls, uh, with that intersection already. Mark Moore told me yesterday that, that, uh, his brother, who certainly knows how to pull a, a boat, just about got creamed trying to get in and out of there. So I would hope we could try to get them to do it by spring break and that maybe get them by summer. I, I don't know what the resolution says, but we need to do it before and we need to bring it all the way back down where it was.
To, to Ms. Hardman's point, if you wanted to amend your motion to add awareness clause with regards to as early as possible, there is no timing mechanism in there right now. So if you want to add that language, I'll do that with your vote.
Yes, let's, let's, let's include that in, that, um, to, to try to get it completed before, before the summer season. And I'll amend the motion to that.
Your second on there.
Thank you.
Dr. Hardman, thank you.
Copy the resolution, Pat.
Hey, Pat, uh, Dr. Hardman, here we are, right here. Any, any other board discussion on this? Any, anything from the public? Not, is any opposition? Not, motion passed five and oh. All right.
Sunday night and Monday, I was at a, uh, North Florida Economic Development Summit and they brought some, uh, site consultants in, uh, from all over the country. And it was a good opportunity for me to have a conversation one-on-one with Senator Mufford about the, about the port and the ongoing, uh, pushes for the port. A- as I've mentioned before, he mentioned that there's an awful lot of regional support for this port. What he would like is for me to send him a letter to his office, asking him to come down and let's talk about, how do we capitalize on that regional support? I've said before that I have county commissioners from Gadsden, Jackson, all call me from time to time, asking where's, where's, where are we at on the port? They want to get that port going, so they know it'll benefit them for inland ports and opportunities, uh, through the I-ten corridor. So if the board doesn't have a problem with that, I'll send a, a, a letter to Senator Mufford, ask him to come down. When he comes down, I'll certainly include the folks that are involved with the, with the port. And he wants just a small group to talk about, how do we capitalize on that? So I'll, if the board doesn't mind, I'll send that letter.
Sure. All right. Anything else?
That's all I have.
Thank you, thank you.
The only thing that I have is, um, uh, the Appalachia Regional Planning Council has funding available for small business loans. And, um, our county is included in that. There are some, um, some rules and parameters to that lending, but, uh, businesses in Gulf County need to be aware that there is money available for small business loans. And if you want to contact me, I can get the information to you and connect you with the Appalachia Regional Planning Council.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, and, and the chair is good. Now, I'm going back over to, uh, Lenir.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, first on our agenda is Ms. Sarah Hines with the Gulf County Health Department. She wants to speak with you in reference to a proclamation and I put a copy of that at your desk before.
Okay, come on up, ladies. All right, there we go. Ms. Sarah?
Hello.
How you doing? How's that son doing?
He's good, he's three months old.
Three months old today, that's great, that's great. Proceed.
My name is Sarah Hines and I am the Health Education Program Manager for the Florida Department of Health in Gulf County.
All right, introduce you, other two guests, please.
I'm Evelyn Youngs, I'm a registered nurse with the Gulf County Health Department.
All right.
I'm Gwen Allen, I work in the Environmental Health Section.
Hey, ladies.
I'm gonna have a little more detail about them in just a little bit. Okay, um, so I'm here today to talk about the celebration for one hundred and twenty-five years of public health in the state of Florida. Before we get into those exciting details, I just want to take a quick minute to talk about the, how important public health is. When my health education team and I talk to the community about the services offered at the Health Department, most are typically aware of two things, immunizations and septic tank permits. But there's so much more to public health and it plays such a significant role in our lives every day. So in fact, um, without public health, life expectancy would be forty-seven. Without public health, there would be no school health nurse. And without public health, there would be no home base for programs like Women, Infants and Children, Healthy Start, or Tobacco Prevention to improve health outcomes. And when it comes to Gulf's history and public health, earliest records reveal that in nineteen fifty, Dr. Albert Ward was appointed to the State Board of Health and was instrumental in the construction of a public health clinic in Port St. Joe. In addition to his private practice, he devoted a good deal of time to treating the community's indigent residents at the Public Health Department. In lieu of payment, some of Dr. Ward's patients paid him in fish, vegetables and fresh game. In nineteen fifty-six, the Health Department in Port St. Joe was renamed Albert L. Ward Health Center in his memory. In Gulf County, Health Department employees continue to go to work every day to help us stay healthy and safe from epidemics. They continue to protect, promote and improve the health of our communities. And I have two employees with me today who have been there for quite a while, actually. So we have Ms. Evelyn Youngs, um, she's been there for twenty-four years. She started as an LPN. Okay, and then, um, became a registered nurse and was the director of nursing for how long?
Seven years.
Seven years. She worked in all public health and primary care settings. That includes tuberculosis, immunizations, family planning and epidemiology. She provided nursing leadership during the first joint commission accreditation process in March of two thousand and eight. And, um, the continuous accreditation status ha- is still, still there to this day. The most recently accreditation is, was in two thousand and thirteen. And we had Ms. Gwen Allen, twenty-six years. She started as a front desk clerk and then moved over to environmental health as environmental health aide. And then she was in administration for a long time. How long was that?
Twelve years.
Twelve years. And now she's back, uh, working with Zach Hodges, keeping him in line as in, in the environmental health section again. She was instrumental in the successful application for our FQHC, our federally qualified healthcare center, which is called St. Joseph Care Florida, which opened in two thousand and three. Um, she's a great source of history, she's also the backbone of the Health Department. And she remembers most of those who have provided public health services for so many years. So they're here today because we'd like to, um, have a proclamation signed, um, to kickstart our celebration for one hundred and twenty-five years of public health. The date for that event is gonna be next Thursday, February twentieth. Department of Health in Gulf County will take part in the celebration by having an open house event, which will include displays of historical information about our county health department and free flu shots available to the community while supplies last. The event will last in each of our locations from three to five P.M. Eastern Time in Port St. Joe and four to five-thirty Central Time in Weewahichka. Now we're gonna read it.
Whereas the yellow fever epidemic that occurred in Florida during eighteen eighty-seven to eighteen eighty-eight brought to light the need for control of this and other diseases in Florida to prevent the future epidemics. And whereas in response to this need, the Florida Legislature created the State Board of Health on February twentieth, eighteen eighty-nine. And. Whereas the State Board of Health, now named the Florida Department of Health, has a presence in all Florida counties to protect, promote and improve the health of all people in Florida. And whereas the efforts of the Florida Department of Health have helped create healthier living environments and a better quality of life for the residents and visitors in Gulf County. And whereas the dedicated public health professionals who work for the Florida Department of Health in Gulf County continue to serve the needs of our community by providing health services, monitoring and responding to emerging health threats and promoting heal- healthy choices for all who live, work and play in Gulf County.
A little, little more of it. That's it?
Okay.
Okay.
Well, hey, just go ahead and grant them their time, everyone.
Okay, thank you. Now therefore, we, the Board of County Commissioners and of Gulf County do hereby recognize the one hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary of Florida public health and ask that all residents join us in extending our sincere gratitude to the staff, past and present, of the Florida Department of Health in Gulf County for their commitment to the people of our communities during these one hundred and twenty-five years. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll adopt the resolution, Mr. Chairman.
There you go, there you go.
Thank you.
Got a motion, got a second by Commissioner Bryan. Is any opposition to it? Any, any from the public? Not, pushing pass five and oh. Thank you, ladies, come back anytime, we're glad to have you. Thank you. Okay, uh.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Lenir.
Next on our agenda is Ms. Katrina Saunders with Weewah Medical Center.
Okay, Ms. Saunders, are you, yes, there you are. Please come on up.
Good morning, I have with me, um, Orin Oakley.
Good morning.
Morning, good morning, Ms. Oakley.
I am the center manager for the Weewahichka Medical Center and, uh, we are one of Gulf County's federally qualified healthcare centers. And as I promised about a quarter ago, that we'll come back every quarter and update you on what's happening with the Weewah Medical Center. Good news, our patient encounters are up twenty percent from this time last year. We continue to have our same-day scheduling in place and we continue to accept new patients. The big reason to come today is to let you know that North Florida Medical Center, which is our parent corporation, has, uh, taken some of their federal dollars and, uh, we're using them really to strengthen our service to the community. We've hired a nurse case manager who will be helping Dr. Cortez and Ann Rubin, our physician's assistant, with our chronic care management patients. So she is busy calling patients, um, sending them letters regarding their conditions. And we're working to develop tobacco cessation classes and also to develop, uh, some diabetes classes as well. So hopefully we'll be having those in the center and, um, for the, for the community. We've also hired three outreach and enrollment workers. Orin is our outreach and enrollment worker for the Gulf County area as well as for the Franklin, uh, County area. I wanted to give her a minute just to, um, kind of publicize what she can do for the community and emphasize, and I know she will, that, um, her services are for the community, not just for the patients at Weewah Medical, but, uh, truly a community service.
All right, Ms. Oakley, please.
Yes, um, as she explained, I help serve the community as far as helping them. I'm basically their connection to streamline the process of finding, um, affordable health coverage or any type of health benefits that they can take advantage of at this time. A lot of people are confused about the new health changes and a lot of people are not sure where to find these resources or may find frustration in trying to, um, take benefit from the resources on their own. So, um, they can walk into the center at any time or they can call upon, and make appointments. And I'm basically there to help guide them through and, um, I help screen them to find out what they qualify for. And, um, I actually walk them through the process of getting them signed up and enrolled, um, with programs like the Affordable Care Act, Medicaid, Kid Care, um, SSI even. So, um.
Go ahead.
Okay. No, but, um, with that, um, I help individuals and families. So, um, I travel to different centers, um, as needed to, um, help those who may call in with questions. And, um, that, that's basically the, the meat of what I do.
Ms. Saunders?
That's it.
That's it.
Thank you for your time.
Ms. Saunders, thank you and come back anytime, we're glad to have you. Thank you, ladies. Ms. Lenir.
Mr. Chairman, um, our next item on our agenda is, is for the board to discuss industrial park commercial lease agreement.
All right, I'm going to go over to our attorney.
Mr. Chairman, pages seven and eight in your information packet, there's correspondence from, uh, Tifco Enterprises and Mr. Tony Moina. The response or the letter that was received, I believe, um, our chief financial officer and the clerk's office has been sending out some, uh, recent invoices with regards to past due rent, late fees and the sales tax that's accrued on the, uh, industrial park lease as well that you all entered last year. The most recent, uh, invoice I received from Ms. Herring indicated eight thousand two hundred and twenty dollars were outstanding on the property and that was sent out earlier this month. I believe, uh, the clerk's office had sent prior notices in the month of January as well indicating, um, lower balances, but this is the most recent tally that we have. In response to that, um, we've received correspondence from Mr. Moina that you have in your packet requesting, uh, a modification or termination to the industrial park commercial lease. Happy to answer questions with regards to the letter, um, that you have in your packet.
Question on this?
Yeah, I think at the end of the day, struggling.
Let me, uh, go ahead or not.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
Gentlemen, people in the audience, small business, our small business people are struggling. And, uh, Moina back here, he's in private enterprise and he came through, was hoping things would develop. It happened. Man is simply asking us, just simplified ways, not, he didn't leave town on a rainy night heading to the state of Georgia. He's still in Gulf County, but he cannot come up into some of the provisions that we're in here. Business is just off and these small business people are struggling. All he's asking us is to get him out from under this lease agreement. Now, he's gonna stay right here, but he couldn't go in. His business didn't develop the way he could employ another ten people. He can't just put ten people on his payroll, he'll be out of business. That's essentially what we've got here. Man just asking out of a lease. Is, uh, Mr. Moina, if you, anything that you would like to, uh, address before the board or pretty much our associate? They're here, if you would. Come up, please. If you would, come up, please. Good morning, Ms. Kelly. How you doing? Good morning, Ms. Moina.
Main thing is, is we had a business plan to expand throughout the southeast and add employees and move along, and it just didn't work out. It just, it was hard to manage. You know, when we spread out, and it spread us too thin, it spread our resources too thin, it made business locally hurt because we had our resources spread elsewhere. So we're going, you know, we're reducing, we're moving back to our old building and reducing the size of our staff, and, you know, we're going to, you know, work locally instead of throughout the southeast, so.
And we were hoping to lease the building we own there in town, and we didn't even have one business look at it.
Yeah, not a call. Not a call.
Not a call. It's just bad. Yes.
And Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I can say this, it's actually was a big plus for the county anyway because y'all went in there, the work that was done on that building. I mean, that building is super nice now.
Compared to what it was.
And it's ready to, you know, ready for somebody else that maybe want to take a chance or whatever. So, you know, I hate your building, I hate it didn't work out, but still again, the building's up and operational and running, and I'm telling you all, we don't need to let it get like it was before.
No, it stayed occupied up there for I don't know how many years, stored stuff. We've received nothing. We have received compensation, not only monetary compensation, but Moina and his company, they have went in there and spent a lot of their own money on this building, which was in the agreement. Anyway, hopefully this board can help. I support him with a motion, I meant, you know.
Motion on the floor.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, part of the discussion, as you guys are moving forward, obviously I'm going to have some questions as we go forward. So if you're going to entertain a motion, and there's a second for discussion, I'd like to clarify a couple of points for you as you move forward.
Do you want to do that, or you just want to come back to the floor?
Well, just a couple of things. If you all recall, we did a right of first refusal.
Exactly.
So that's still on the table. Obviously, they're seeking to get out from under this commercial lease, and whatever the board's will may be. We need to do a final inspection on this facility to do a walkthrough. There's also the outstanding sum that the clerk's office has on the books. You've seen in the correspondence from the tenant as to their investment in the property, but there have to be some determination by this commission as to what you're going to do between the balances and that value as well. So those are things for the discuss prior, or part of your discussion or your motions.
All right. Okay. Chair recognizes question.
Ms. Attorney, would you rather we wait on this and let's get all our facts together before we actually come down to a vote with it? Oh, I hate it, really.
Okay. With regards to your direction to the staff, you know, if the commission wants to put it to an action, the sooner you have a property, obviously the more marketable will be to you all to get somebody else in there. If it's not your intent to do that, or you need more information, then provide me that direction so that I know I can send a default notice to them and execute under the terms of the commercial lease. Commercial lease is very specific if they're in default as to what steps we need to take to bring them into compliance. You get them out in a victim, you get them in compliance, you work out a resolution. And I don't know which way this commission's going, but if you all want to put any action on the floor, give me the direction I need to, and then I can ask you some additional questions.
So move, Mr. Attorney.
Whoa, 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 whoa. We ain't see nothing there. Go ahead.
If the board is ready to take an action, and they have asked the questions, if you all have the information you need from the letter, and Ms. Sherry has the balance that's owed right now, you have a multi-year commercial lease on the property, and there's obligations to perform under that. If the commission is entertaining this letter, then provide us, me, some direction with regards to this commercial lease so I know what questions to ask you next.
Sure. Go ahead, and then I'll follow.
Attorney, how much in repairs, how much money did they put into the building?
Their letter of February, or there's no date, their letter indicates they put $11,390 into the property.
And how much you said that they...
$8,820. I apologize. $8,220 is outstanding as of today. Outstanding.
During this process, we was able to get the building back up to standard.
I haven't inspected, I've never been in it, but, you know, maybe the staff can provide you that information.
Basically, I mean, we've been talking here and here, basically, all I'm saying is this, and we'll try to keep it very simple, Mr. Attorney. Gentleman has come and asked to, you know, he wants to go back because it didn't pan out. All I'm saying is this, pay the power bill, pay the water bill, movie stuff, and then after we, we'll go up and do an inspection and sign off. That's my feeling, but that's just one of five here.
I'm with the chairman. You know, we've rented the building a couple of times, and it seemed like both times we allowed somebody to stay in it a little bit longer than they had the money to stay into it. So I think working with the EDA, giving them the opportunity to maybe lease that thing out, we actually had an agreement with the EDA at one time about if you lease it out, we'll fund part of the EDA with that money. So I think the best thing to do is, as the chairman says, just get out of the lease agreement. I have seen it, it looks 10 times better than what it did. So we certainly got a benefit, and they did pay lease payments for a little while. So I'm in support of you, Mr. Attorney.
All right. That's my motion. I got a motion on the...
All right. Restate your motion, mister.
To let them out of the lease agreement, pay the water and electric bill.
All right. Okay. Second, end of discussion now. Go ahead. Commissioner Bryan, out the floor.
I just think that we need to recall that with this lease agreement, there was a big rush to get this done. It's certainly not Mr. Moina's responsibility to look out for the interest of this county. He's a businessman, and he came to the table to deal with the county. It's our responsibility to look out for the interest of the county. And I'm sorry that Mr. Moina's business did not work out the way that he had planned. But when we were entering into this agreement, we had to have a special meeting because things were being done. Commissioner McLemore had county staff and work crews up there doing work. That was the responsibility of the tenant. There was a lowered lease payment because the tenant had responsibilities to do tenant improvements. And I think we need to take all of these into consideration because all of that is the public's dollar, and we are representing the public. And I think that clearly we're going to need to terminate this lease agreement. Mr. Moina cannot handle this building, and business did not go in the direction that he planned. We do need to cut the losses and terminate this lease agreement. But as far as the dollars go, we need to recall that this is not our money, this is the public's money, and we need to look at this from a logical standpoint, and there's a reason that we have a lease, there's a reason that we have written agreements, and we need to stand by those agreements.
Can you think it?
Chair, Mr. Moina, please. I've got commercial property that I'm leasing now to Subway, to Farm Bureau, to Glory Hair Care. And I made the investment to get that property ready for them to lease in it that I've been paid lease payments for several years. I was, when we started this deal with the industrial park building, I wasn't under the understanding that I was going to have to make these large investments in this building. I thought that the building would be prepared and ready for me to move into it, and that I'd make lease payments. I didn't know that I was going to have to invest $10,000 to $15,000 to actually get it ready for me to move in it. We weren't aware of how poor the building, the condition of the building was. So, you know, in regards to your comments, I pretty much made them investments, not because it was something that was required of me to do from the county, but we were just trying to get the building where you could use it. It'd been left vacant for a long period of time. It was rundown. Ceiling tiles were sagging from moisture. Carpet was in real bad shape. The paint was in real bad shape. It was in poor condition. I almost looked at it and walked away. And I was approached to try to help. At the time, we were doing a lot better than we are now financially, to try to help get this building in use. It was something that we looked at in the very beginning, I think three or four years the building was built and was, before Talton's actually moved into the building, we had, I was in negotiation with the Board of County Commissioners to use that building, but that didn't pan out and how it worked out, and Talton's got it. But we did make a lot of investments in that building that I don't feel as a tenant should have to do. That would be like me, if I had a piece of property or a house I was going to rent to somebody, going to my tenants and saying, hey, you know, I got a place to rent, but you need to make these investments and get it ready so you can rent it and pay me money. So that's just the way I feel about that situation.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Sure.
I do want to just repeat that. It's not your responsibility to sit on this side of the table and look out for our side of the deal, so I'm not faulting you in any way.
Right.
Mr. Attorney, am I incorrect that there was provisions in the lease for a lowered lease payment and some tenant improvements?
There was an inspection prior, if I recall. There's language in there about economic development, job growth, and reductions on the front end in the rent scale. I knew that was part of the discussion, and there was a mutual inspection of the property. As the tenants gone in there, they've discussed they had to have prior approval to do these improvements to the building. So prior to doing them, they had to ask for the approval of the county, and they've done them in cooperation with the county, obviously. The outside of the building obviously was improved. The inside of the facility, Mr. Moina's listed in his letter, kind of a brief summary of the things they've done in the short time they've been in there. But those have all been requested permission and to do them as you went forward. Again, just knowing that they had requested that approval was with the intent, I believe Mr. Moina had the intent to fully perform under the lease, or else they wouldn't have made those, because each time they did them, they were long-term modifications to the inside of the building. So, like I said, I spoke with Mr. Moina prior to this meeting and receiving his notice. In that discussion, obviously it's up to the commission on how you're going to do that. There's accelerated rent components, there's a lot of different default remedies to this commission. But at the end of the day, you know, we're going to need to provide the staff with direction as to which way you're going to go. I've heard a consensus up there that you all want to break this lease. It's just after we do it, how do we go about it? And that's where my questions would come up for you all.
It seems to me that we can potentially today vote to terminate the lease and give direction to the staff to come back with more information regarding dollars that we're facing.
If I can have the two weeks to work with the tenant and get a release from the property, do a final inspection with the staff, do a walkthrough, have him sign off the rights and obligations under the lease, have him relinquish the right of first refusal, in those next two weeks, we can come back to you all with a comprehensive plan for you to all stamp and approve, and we can move in that direction. In the next 14 days, on 25th, we can give you that final proposal.
And that would stop any additional payments due by Mr. Moina.
If that's your will, yeah.
All right. Your motion was to terminate the lease, is that correct?
Yeah, that was...
Attorney is going to look into the details of it. We're just simply today...
Terminating the lease.
Terminating.
That's my motion.
Terminate the lease. That's your motion.
Mr. Smiley seconded it.
All right.
I second it because you're telling me that, from what I'm understanding, he's $8,000, how much you said?
$8,220.
Okay, behind, and he invested probably $11,000 into the building?
Unverified.
Well, I mean, I went up and looked at the building myself before we moved in and out, so I'm going to leave my second on the floor.
Okay, so I'm going to re-clear my motion then. My motion's going to be to terminate his contract and let him move back and let him put forward what he's invested toward the lease.
Well, and I want to clarify that these are unverified figures. You are relying on a letter. None of the staff has verified this. Our attorney is telling us that he would like to look into the details and work out this deal. This is the public's money. It is not our money. And we can easily terminate this lease today so that no additional monies are due, and we can have our staff, who we rely on, go and look at the actual dollars spent, the improvements made, and what was considered under the lease that was their responsibility under the lease, and then come back to the table and talk about the dollars due. That is the responsible thing for this board to do.
I'm under the impression that's what we're doing. I mean, that's the recommendation, I think, that I'm hearing, and the motion was just to terminate the lease and let the administration work out the details, come back to us in two weeks. Is that...
If it's acceptable, commissioners...
I thought Commissioner McLemore came back and said that he wanted to go ahead and go with these figures.
And I do. That's my motion because I'm... Ms. Bryan, have you been up?
I understand your motion, did not.
Yes, you understood me correctly. Have you been up there to that building?
That's not the point. I am not an inspector. You're not an inspector. Commissioner Smiley is not an inspector.
I'm there all the time, and I know what's been done to that building up there, and I can assure you, we're a lot better off.
And clearly, you had an interest in this deal, the way that you pushed it, and we had to call an emergency meeting.
Hold it now. This is accomplishing nothing.
This is discussion on the motion on the floor.
Absolutely nothing to what the gentleman came before here today.
Commissioner McDaniel, this is discussion on the floor.
Right. Stick to the point. We're not going back and washing dirty laundry here.
Mr. McLemore is a commissioner. I am a commissioner, and we should be able to discuss a point on the floor.
All right. There's a motion on the floor. Second, we have a second here. Do you understand the commotion? Yeah, that's what we got here. But do you understand the motion?
Let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
Can we put this motion upon, the attorney, the bar fire, and Mr. Attorney going up, looking at everything? Because I've not been up there and looked at it. I know what I'm doing.
I have to. I've been in the building several times.
I'm good with my motion. I have a second on it, Mr. Chairman.
My line is, I am not up here and I'm not going to sit up here and try to put a small businessman out of business. This man has come forward, says, I've run into some financial problems. I simply would like to get out from under this and, you know, try to go forward and keep some people. But I'm not going to, I'm not going to hold him because sooner or later, we could force him into bankruptcy.
Oh, Mr. Chairman?
And that's the last thing I want to do, is hurt a small business person.
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment.
Sure.
On that note, there are thousands of people in this county struggling, and these are their tax dollars that we're dealing with. Nobody wants to put Mr. Moina out of business. This is a business deal. This is a contract. This lease is a contract, and we enter into contracts on behalf of the public because that is our responsibility. And when something goes wrong, we don't just throw the whole thing out the door. Now, we could hold a speech to the fire and tell them we're not terminating this lease, and that is not what we're looking to do. We're looking to work with Mr. Moina, but we have to look at the public's interest. So many people in this county are struggling, thousands of people. They can't pay their taxes. We need to be looking out for them. That is our responsibility. And by looking at a letter that comes in with no verification, and any one of these commissioners, including myself on this board, going to that building and looking at it and saying, oh, this looks great, that is not our job. Our job is to send our staff, who is trained, who understands these improvements, and let our attorney, who knows what the responsibilities are under our contract that tenant was supposed to provide, and come back to this board and advise what was paid for and what was owed, and then we make a decision.
I think that's what the attorney plainly stated before. This is just, today is just to acknowledge that this gentleman wants to terminate this contract, but he would go back and come back with a final figure.
That is not Commissioner McLemore's motion.
Mr. Chairman, I want to step further with that. I included that the investment that is made with the, into the building, I included that to offset the eloquent lease payment.
Well, that's where the...
That's my motion.
That's where the attorney will go in, and they will see, and Mr. Butler, the administrator, and they'll come down with the final figure.
Ms. McLemore, if you would, you know, I'm for all, we're going to protect this guy. I am for, you know, I see the items mentioned in the letter, and I am for getting one of our staff members to work with Mr. Moina and just going through there and verifying. That makes sense.
That's fine. I'll provide any documentation.
Yeah. That's perfect.
An invoices, anything.
If you will amend your motion to allow staff to work with Mr. Marina, just to verify these numbers, so all of, I've been in it, too.
I will amend my motion to include staff to go up and inspect.
Okay.
Are you doing the terms of the lease?
In two weeks, I'll include in the package for you all to provide you the documentation from the tenant, in addition to the documents that we'll ask you all to accept to sign off, releasing them from the obligations, and then in terms of the figures and the debt, you all can make your evaluation at that time, based on the documentation that's provided to you.
I'm making it now, that's my motion, now.
Well, okay.
He just asked, look into.
I understand you amended your motion to let staff work with Mr. Marina, who, he's fine with that, so if you amended your motion to allow staff to verify these numbers, then I'm good to proceed.
That's good.
I'll second that.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, my motion, I second that.
Got your motion, got your second. Any further discussion here? Any from the public, from the audience on this? Come on up, Ms. .
The way I hear it, the attorney has said is that he would like for you to vote today, simply to terminate the lease today, no further steps than just agree to terminate the lease.
Barbara, I didn't say that, but that's fine.
But if that's what they wish to do.
Okay.
But not do all these other things.
There's a lease language, and there's steps that can be followed. If their direction and will is to terminate this lease and work with the business in the community, then the next two weeks, I will do that and come back to them with a proposal.
And that's what you're saying, but that's not what Mr. McLemore's motion is, so it seems to me that you are disregarding advice of your attorney.
I have a motion on the table, you're correct with my motion, it's very clear, I have a second, now I want the chairman to call for a vote.
Can we have the motion restated?
Sure.
Commissioner McLemore.
For clarification? I have the, Mr. McLemore made the motion to terminate the lease agreement and allow the investments made by TIFCO to offset the payments that he has not made and allow staff to inspect.
Absolutely, and confirm it. Clear.
But, but did you not say, Mr. Attorney, that based on the steps this board decides to take today, will determine the steps you then take?
I'm clear with the motion of what steps I need to take in the next 13 days, to come back to you all with the documents and a final staff recommendation with regards to the value of the things that have been provided in his letter. So at that date, today, we'll start the commencement for the termination of the lease, Commissioners, and in two weeks, we'll have verification with regards to the final sum that you all accept as verified or contested, and we cannot sign, you cannot sign a release from the lease and the obligations under the lease until you come to a determination on that final figure.
I think.
That's why we'll come back with a verified number to you.
You understand that?
Okay, that's where I think we're not on the same page with Mr. McLemore.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think what you're saying is they're just going to verify that these amounts are correct, that are in the letter, so that's the motion, that they will just verify that these amounts that are in the letter are correct and those were the amounts that were expended, and I understand that, that that's your motion. And my point, before we vote, my point is that there were provisions under the lease that our tenant had the responsibility, or took on the responsibility, to do some of these actions in order to move into that building. They were given an extremely low lease payment. So I'm not trying to get blood out of a turnip, but what I'm saying is, we need to look at what was responsible under the lease, what they took on as a business in this community, and then come back to this table and have staff report to us, this is what they invested, this is what they agreed to under the lease, this is what they owe, and then come back with that figure. That's my argument, but I understand your motion.
All right.
But am I clear that Mr. McLemore is saying that when these figures are verified, we're just gonna offset, turn around, and walk away?
That's my motion. All right.
Let me just take one other thing, and I'm ready to vote for the motion.
I'm gonna call for vote after here, that's it.
Butler, with the lease payment, was that not approved by the EDA? We have to approve that, are we out of that process?
It came out of Atlanta.
Oh, yes, the initial, yeah, we gotta get EDA to agree.
Okay.
Yeah, when you say EDA, I'm thinking local EDA, EDA in Atlanta.
Exactly, that's where the money's come from in the first place to build it, so the amount of the lease was approved by EDA, so I just wanted to make that clear, and I'm ready to vote on the motion.
All right. Okay, call for vote. All opposed to the motion.
I'm opposed.
All right, all in favor? Motion passed, four and one. Marina. Kelly, thank you for coming.
I'll work with the tenant in the next two weeks.
I know he will work this, and he'll get all, he'll sift out all these whatevs and everything, and we'll come down to a good agreement, okay?
I appreciate that.
Gentlemen, have a safe trip home. It's, yeah, it's Lanier.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda is the Gulf County Economic Development Alliance.
Oh, here we go. Mr. Magison, you representing the?
Yes, sir.
Please, sir, come up.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners?
Let me give these to you. I'd like to give a summary of what Economic Development Alliance has been doing over the first quarter of this fiscal year for the county. Currently, we're working on eight viable prospects, actually, that's nine now. I had a meeting with a prospect on Friday that was very encouraging, and may be coming back to the county for a build-out on a building to house them. As you know, the Port Authority has gotten their return on investment back from the company that was doing that, everything was very favorable. It was based upon two letters of intent that the St. Joe Company had. I'd like to point out that working with the Port Authority and the EDA, we currently have three more letters of intent to ship out of Port St. Joe, and I am working on one other one that we should have within the next couple of weeks, which would be the fourth letter of intent to ship out of the port, to Port St. Joe. We have been assisting and collaborating with the Port Authority, we've been responding to emails and other state agencies, we have had visits to various site selectors over that quarter, we've assisted Polarmatic in their efforts to try to get some government contracts, we haven't been successful as of the date, but we have been successful in assisting Health Check and keeping 50 employees here in Gulf County. They were getting ready to move to Mississippi, we have worked with them, Opportunity Florida, and Fairpoint Communications to handle their additional broadband needs, we're also looking and exploring with Opportunity Florida, their new broadband incentive to have backup for Health Check, they have committed to keep their call center here in Gulf County, they've hired five additional employees already in the month of January, and they're looking to hire an additional 10 employees in 2014. We helped sponsor a Small Business Roundtable with the Chamber of Commerce and Gulf Coast College, and as a follow-up, there's a workshop February the 18th to expand on technical assistance so that the existing businesses can expand and grow their business here in Gulf County. We helped facilitate with Jennifer Jenkins, the collaboration with trying to get the cruise ships here, and that's been very successful, thanks to Loretta Costin and Jennifer Jenkins' efforts. We have finished our website, it is up and running, we are in the final stages of updating our brochure, marketing materials, that should be ready within the next couple of We have started and are collaborating with the various state agencies, Enterprise Florida, Opportunity Florida, Florida's Great Northwest, et cetera, et cetera, Port Authority and the Workforce Board as well, and we have met recently and have talked about communication with this board and what we need to do to improve that communication, and we, our board has come to consensus that we need to keep y'all more involved and more informed about what the activities are, and so going forward, we are going to do that. Thank you. Any other questions, or?
Thanks, Gary.
All right, thank y'all.
Thank you.
Ms. Lanier?
Lynn, if I can, I mean, we still have the outstanding invoice with regards to EDA that's been suspended since January 1st, so that is up for discussion, I don't know whether the commission wishes to address that, but that was submitted in the packet for January 14th meeting, it was carried over on the 28th, and now we're on the 11th of February, so that's still out there right now.
You know, at the end of the day, as I always say, as I say, a couple of us didn't support the $80,000 originally, but we support the EDA, and we're supportive. Gary and I had an extensive conversation two weeks ago about thought process, I don't think any of us are experts in economic development. I went to that North Florida Economic Development Summit where Gracewup was at and many of the states, everybody's struggling with economic development, and I think using the taxpayers' dollars, I've told Gary this, I think the use of taxpayers' dollars ought to be more focused on what does the companies need that are existing to help them, and what companies need coming forward as far as 10-year tax exemptions, which we've given Health Check and others that have come here. So I think, you know, what I would request is, there's gonna be times where I think, being as they don't have an executive director now, where they can save the taxpayer dollars a little bit and save that $20,000, and I've had that conversation, I don't know how this board feels, and Gary may elaborate it, they may resubmit, or maybe they can defer a little bit until next year, all of us are struggling with budgets. I like the way that the EDA has been performing as of lately, Gary and I had discussion, they're at least making contact, and look, this board has never, and I know that there's been a lot of talk, and as far as media talk, this board has never tried to micromanage EDA. At one time, we were asking somebody that the EDA hired to move to our community, and for two years, he didn't, so that was an issue with this board, but we've never tried to micromanage the board. I'm in support of the EDA, I would certainly support if they could defer some of these until next year or later on, when they hired somebody or when they worked out, I haven't talked lately in the last week or so about discussions with the EDA in Bay County, I don't know how that's going now, that may not work, may or may not work. Yeah, Gary, if you've got an update on that, you might can update us there, but that's just my feeling, Mr. Chairman.
As a follow-up with discussion with Bay County, I met with Neil Wade last week and also with Jim Brook from Opportunity Florida. Neil is very positive about doing a collaboration with Gulf County, the only hold-up is he's got one board member, Mr. Wayne Stubbs, that is the head of the port over there, that isn't too fond about doing something with Gulf County, since we have a port that will be competing with him for specific state dollars. So that's been the hold-up so far, but Jim Brook with Opportunity Florida has kinda stepped in, and they're gonna lend us a lot more help than previously. As far as the issue with the money, we are gonna have to hire a high-level staff person, because we're gonna have to have somebody that can coordinate the efforts of the Gulf County EDA with the various state agencies, with doing the enterprise zone work to get it off of Don Butler's office. So we can hold off a little while on the commitment from the county, but we would like to finish out our contract and that commitment, we can revisit that before the next budgeting period, and look, can we reduce that to a certain level? But we will need a fairly high-level staff person that can handle those other duties. So, right now, we're not spending any money, because we have five volunteers doing all the work, but we are gonna need some good staff help.
Mr. Magison, are you looking to hire that?
Yes, we are.
And are you?
We're receiving, actually, we're receiving help from Neil Wade and Opportunity Florida on trying to find that person that would fit into that position and do a good job.
I believe we need someone who has Gulf County on the top of their list, and that is, even if it's a part-time person, but that their main concern is Gulf County, and I think that we also need to be certain that we are looking at opportunities outside of the port. I don't think that we should put all of our eggs in one basket, and the port is an important part of the community, but we also need to be looking at growing our economic development outside of the port, and we need to know from you when you need that funding, and I'm hearing today that possibly you're saying that you don't need that payment now?
Today, we don't. We can put it off for a point in time, we hopefully will be hiring that person shortly, and depending upon what those salary requirements are, we may be asking for that money once that hire takes place.
If I can, while Gary's at the podium. Going back to contractual obligations, we, at the meeting on the 14th, there was a motion to suspend the payment, and there was instructions from Mr. Butler and I to meet with Gary. On the 27th of January, we did just that, Gary took the time, as did Loretta, we had a very good meeting with Mr. Butler and myself. The purpose of the meeting, obviously, was to review where they were at, what their compliance with the contract, so on and so forth. The county has an obligation under these contracts as well, just not just with the contractor, the contractor has an obligation, it's a two-way street, the county has an obligation with regards to this payment. The reason I bring it up today, before you move on to the next topic, is we have an obligation to perform, or at least follow the terms. We sat with Gary and Loretta, had a good meeting, they had indicated that they were gonna call a special meeting, which I think they did, they actually addressed some of the deficiencies that we discussed in terms of the 31 deliverables in the contract, Gary even mentioned some of them today, about the communication with the Commissioners and about Enterprise, and I think that's a great step. The county still has an obligation, if we suspend, I would request the obligation to protect the county, to send notice to Gary and the EDA, just to let them know that we have suspended the payment after a month's now transpired of, it's actually more than a month, to let them know, you know, they're working on those areas that we addressed in those meetings. One of the things we talked about in the meeting was the provision 21 in the contract, which is develop and maintain the good communications with the commission and the general partners that you all have put on that commission, on the alliance, and one of the things we were requesting was that the three people that you've put on, that they have a meeting in the near future, have the ability to communicate the things that we talked about in that meeting. I think Gary extended an invitation to all the alliance members, I'm pleased to see a bunch of them are in the audience today, but if to have the county general partners and those alliance members have that meeting in the next week or two, to follow up on our initial meeting that you instructed us to have, I can send the letter to cover the county under the contract, and then obviously let the EDA move forward so they can come back and request that funding at a later date, even though it's delayed right now.
Good deal.
Do you need a motion? Do you need a motion?
To proceed and to send Gary and the EDA that letter to let them know and to request that meeting so they can all have a good forum.
Yes, so moved.
You're gonna put it on, we have a motion by Commissioner Bryan, second by Mr. Jaeger. Any further discussion on it, anything from the public? Not any opposition to it? Not motion passed, five and oh.
Thank you, Gary.
Thanks, Gary.
All right, Ms. .
Public discussion is all we have.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're down to the public, sorry for the delay, anyone from the public that would like to come and address the board, please come forward and state your business. Come on, Dr. Hardman.
I hate to do this, but being dyslexic, I had a few minutes that I had to go back down and sit with my right and my left hand. On the recommendation or the resolution that you passed, unfortunately, we already have what you passed here, we have the right slip lane, Warren and I got them to keep that in before. What we have been asking for and begging for- What we have been asking for and begging for is the second egress.
What we're asking for.
That's not what you put in here.
Uh, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, if I can request permission to work with Dr. Hardman and the CCA and the commissioner with regards to the proper description of the right slip lane for ingress/egress, which provides a second lane, if I can have the ability to redefine the lane in which they're seeking under the resolution.
Okay, let's get it right, Dr. Hardman.
It's, it's in here, be it further resolved and be resolved, but, but for clarity, if, if you would work with Dr. Hardman on, on maybe more, one more, be it resolved.
Can we, can we do that and still get it out of here and get it forward without having to come back?
With, with permission of this commission, I will redefine that slip lane.
Second. So we've got a motion, Commissioner McLemore, second by Commissioner Jaeger. Any discussion from any of the others? Any more from the public? All right. Pushing past five and oh. All right, before we adjourn, anybody else?
Oh, we already adjourned.
No, 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 I hadn't called for adjournment. Come on up. I'll do that. No, we were, uh, getting Dr. Hardman. Go ahead, Bo.
Good morning, Mr. Commissioners, Mr. Chairman, Beau Patterson, City Commissioner. I live at 609 10th Street here in Port St. Joe. Uh, I've been called by a few people. I live in the city, but I've been called by a few county residents, asked me to come and clarify something from this board. It has to do with your ordinance as far as how many mobile homes or campers you can put on one lot.
Okay? Right over here.
LDR defines as one mobile home per parcel.
Uh, that includes campers and things like that.
With the proper setbacks and other additional requirements they have for this.
My other question would be, are we enforcing that ordinance?
I, I think we're unfortunate when somebody complains. We are not riding the county, which I don't think Michael's got time, he's a one-man show. But, but once...
And I had one businessman in town that, you know, they stole campers in his place of business, and he said he had lost about 10 accounts in the last six months because they're leaving him and going out to St. Joe Beach or any other place and putting, they think they can put more than one on, on a partial lot. I was just asked to come and verify that, too.
We have one code enforcement officer, so we are doing the best we can to work through all of the issues, and he has the whole county.
Sure.
We are doing the best, but if, if people are out there and they have an issue with the property, they certainly could call code enforcement and report it.
Okay. Call him, he'll, he'll...
He'll be there. He'll be there. He sure will.
As I say, I was just asked to come and bring that up, so that's, that's why I'm here. I'd like to say, uh...
Thanks, Bo.
I look forward to the city and the county getting together and getting some work done. We need to get together and for the betterment of this whole community, Gulf County and City of Port St. Joe, so I just want to extend to y'all an invitation today that we're ready to talk to you. We're ready to get some things done for the betterment of this city and county.
Thanks, Bo. We are, too.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. One more thing, Commissioner Smiley.
The Pace Foundation for the Affordable Apartments that they was applying for in 2013, they're gonna re, reapply for 2014. They're gonna have a town hall meeting at the Washington Recreation, well, at the Wigg Building or at the Washington Recreation Center on the 13th of, uh, this month. But that's Thursday, so if anyone want to come out and have any questions for the Pace